The Economic Development Corporation to order. Uh, Rick, if you don't mind, would you do the invocation and pledge for us?
He's got his mouth full.
Rather than you take the body of something. Sorry about that. Give that with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together to work as a group to try and help this city. We thank you for getting us here safely. We thank you for the meal. Pray for the hands that prepared this meal for us. Hope that you see us safely home. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Home, I wish. Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Constitution's flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
A stranger in our midst.
Um, Elizabeth is, um, she says she's trying to get on now.
Texas, I'm good now.
That was Jay. Jay's in there.
We're going to have roll call.
All right, Elizabeth, you should be in.
J C Stubbs.
Here.
Joey Afagie.
Here.
Jay Jackson.
Here.
Rick Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Elizabeth Russellwick. She says she's on.
I can see her. Eliz- Elizabeth, can you hear us?
Elizabeth's on mute.
Oh, okay, yeah, it just showed up as muted. I'm trying to unmute her. She, she's here.
Okay.
We'll get that.
Jonas Titus.
Here.
Diane Dressel.
Here.
Fred Chavon.
Here.
Barbara Blue Warewell.
Here.
All right, Elizabeth, are you in now? Uh, Elizabeth, try one more time. Uh, now she's muted again. Hers keeps talking back and forth. Elizabeth, are you there? Yeah, I'll call, I'll put her on speakerphone.
Uh, moving on, do we have any announcements? All right. Item E, Citizens Forum. At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak on any matter other than personnel matters, matters under litigation, or matters on the regular agenda for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section. Do we have any one for Citizens Forum?
Jonas, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, good. Sorry about that.
No worries, I'm hanging up the cell phone.
Thank you.
Looks like we have anybody in the Citizens Forum. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the EDC Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item F1, consideration and action on approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on January 27th, 2021, Brittany Sanders.
Hello, everyone. I have attached February 27th meeting minutes. Um, do anyone have any questions?
What is the desire of the board?
They see a move to go ahead and approve, uh, H1 at Red.
You mean F1?
F1.
We have a motion by Joey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jay, second.
There was a second by Jay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, moving on to F2, consideration and action on approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on February 24th, 2021, Brittany Sanders.
I have attached, uh, meeting minutes for February 24th, 2021. Um, any questions or concerns regarding the meeting minutes?
All right, what's the motion of the, uh, preference of the board?
Move we approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Rick.
I'll second.
Second by Joey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the, any opposed? Motion carries. Doesn't look like we have any public hearings today, so we'll move on to item H, action items. Item H1, consideration and action on approving the monthly financial report for the month of January 2021, Diane Dressel.
Good morning. We had a beginning fund balance this year post the operating account index pool of $7,133,438. We had total revenues of $920,832. And that includes sales tax, the land sales for Jimmy Clark or Fieldstone, we got that check, and interest expenditures for $59,655. And that left us with an ending fund balance of $7,000,991,780.
Any questions or, or thoughts? Discussion? What is the desire of the board?
A move we approve.
A motion by Rick. Do we have a second?
Jay, seconded.
All right, we have a second by Jay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item H1 carries. Item H2, consideration and action on approving the monthly financial report for the month of February 2021.
Okay, our beginning balance is $7,991,788. We did not receive a sales tax check, but that's because we received it in March. It came later. Um, so we had revenues of $637, expenditures of $30,522, total ending fund balance of $7,932,770.
Any discussion from the board? What is the desire of the board?
This is Jay. I would like to take the motion and approve item H2 as a.
All right.
I, I second that. Okay, right, I'm sorry.
Uh, so we have a, uh, motion by Jay, a second by Elizabeth. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H3, consideration and action on approving resolution EDC 2021 dash zero one for the rebuilding of Constitution Drive, Jonas Titus.
So you'll see, this is in your packet and, uh, it's page 13 of the PDF packet before you. And this, uh, is a resolution basically codifying or declaring that we see that the construction of the gateway road to our industrial park is a bona fide economic development project. Um, uh, takes into account the, uh, the, the price provided by the city. Uh, and that estimate was, uh, was generated last year, so it, it is relatively recent. We're pretty confident that that, that is a good number. So, um, this is not just a repaving, this is, this is a rebuild and also includes drainage improvements, so.
Jonas, what page did you say?
It's on page 13 of the packet. Thirteen of twenty-one.
I see now. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Just a question. The, this is the same area as where on course going to be laying there, um.
Yes. For Atmos.
Yes.
Atmos.
Atmos.
Yes.
Uh, my question would be, would this be helpful for that same project to get, to work together to try and get it done, so?
Well, we've already awarded the contract with Smetana and they are, they should be beginning construction imminently. So, and that'll be outside this right of way, so they're. And that proj- that project will be well complete before this gets underway.
You could use one of the Atmos contractors to do road construction.
I was just trying to see if, because I know it's being tied into the same direction.
Yep.
Economy of scale.
Any other questions or discussion?
I have a thought. I'd like to see if he can get a sign out of this.
A, a sign?
Yes. Signage. Somewhere along there, showing a better directional button to your gateway.
Okay.
Maybe it could go where that sign that says Copper Cove Business Park that's on one that.
Right, right there by the ange.
Yes, exactly. Where there's, where we have business park.
Who put that up?
I haven't. I'd say that's been there for a long time.
It was there when Cofa LA was there.
Yeah.
I've been here. Been here.
Press button or something.
Yeah.
I, I just think it helps make a better use of the, you know, it, it is enhancing really your park.
Mm-hmm.
That we're down there. We're down there.
Would, what about just wayfinding in general signage? Is, would that be a potential EDC pro- uh, type A project?
No, well, potentially, but have to be pretty particular.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
This one, I think, is, it lends itself to it because you're kind of at that area where it's, it's not right in front of your Narrows Park, but it, it is a, a lead into it. And so if you put something there and even if you, if you, even if it was something where you could actually have advertising for, you know, any entity that happens to be in the park ultimately, then that might be a, a nice fit, but definitely at least advertising the park.
Okay.
And that, that's a better tie for, you know, because this isn't like, you know, right there.
Yeah.
There. So, it helps.
Okay. Yeah, we'll definitely talk with, uh, you know, this, this authorize, this, this resolution will authorize staff to really move forward and put together a plan and, and budget and, and get that before you, so.
And with, with that possible, it'll be amended to come back to request additional funding.
Well, y- yes, we use, we.
I thought it was.
Correct.
Okay. So how do we?
You still approve this resolution?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know.
Yeah, it, it just gives staff direction for what, what they, the project, wha- what will be included in the actual budget and project.
So any other discussion? What is the desire of the board?
They see a move to approve resolution EDC 2021 dash zero one, uh, and consider funding both components of the project in the amount not to exceed $2,039,000, thirty-nine, three, what? Thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars for the design and construction. Thank you.
So we have a motion, uh, from Joey. Do we have a second?
I second that.
There was a second from Elizabeth. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H4, discussion and direction on bids for spec building in the Narrows Business Technology Park, Jonas Titus.
All right, thank you, thank you. This, this is one that, you know, we, it, it keeps, we, we keep making progress, keep trudging it forward. Um, so we have two good proposals that are actually providing exactly what we are, what we're trying to gain from a feasibility analysis. The first one is in the packet. The second one, I believe, was emailed to you. Um, these are, uh, varying amounts. The first one of community development strategies is, um, $15,750, uh, but this will help us scale and design the facility. And they are basing part of their, uh, research on six to eight interviews with industrial brokers active in the central Texas market. So that firsthand knowledge is a very, very valuable input in which they are providing. The second proposal is provided by CB and RE, CBR, CBRE. Uh, and they're a national, um, well-regarded, uh, industrial brokerage firm. Um, their proposal is a little bit more expensive, $20,000, uh, but this, uh, you know, they have a lot of that expertise in-house that may not require the, the, the interviews with active brokers in our market as, as they have a, they have an office in, in Austin, uh, serve our area also from the, from their offices in the Metroplex. Um, that being said, we are, the other piece that we're exploring is the, th- these proposals will help us get to a design of a project which we want to form a public-private partnership with a developer to help construct the facility. A developer that is already interested in the project, uh, who has done these projects to, uh, great amount of success throughout the state, has been trying to schedule a, a meeting to come down and look at the site. And with the winter storm and the pandemic, the, the calendars have changed a couple times. So staff, we are flying him down to box him in and make sure that, uh, we'll get him here sooner rather than later. So he'll, he'll be here a week from next Tuesday, um, and we'll be touring the site together, uh, and go, going back to the office to talk about, uh, potential details. So, uh, this may be a little premature at this moment to take action on either one of these feasibility analyses. Uh, but we have options. We have interested parties that'll actually provide, I think, a very, very valuable product for us that'll help provide guidance to staff, uh, to make sure that we construct a, 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 a facility that will gain traction on the market and, and will be attractive. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions, any direction, uh, from the board.
So the, uh, the guy that's coming on in a week.
Yep.
Is that also for a feasibility an- analysis?
No, it, that, that would, we would, we would jointly rely on his expertise, may, we would do some sort of feasibility analysis, but this is part of a process to get to a relationship with a developer to form the private partner, pr- public-private partnership, so.
The, the analysis is probably, I think it's something we need to do as far as doing our due diligence. And I think we need to make sure that we go for best value, not necessarily low bid. So that's, that's my two cents.
Rick, what do you think?
Did you take a final bite?
I was waiting, I'm sorry.
I know. I'll take you out, Brett.
CBRE, they did.
It doesn't make feasibility for.
Yeah, they, they provided a feasibility, they, they provided a, an analysis to us, but it was, this will be a lot more robust and really, they, they basically provided us with a, 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 a study that said you can build three types of buildings, a small, medium, or large, and we think you should have a medium building. And that, that more or less was the executive summary.
Total of it, but they'll go into more detail and more broader, uh, view of the entire project.
Yeah, yes.
All right, so, on the CDS, um, is it CDS?
Yeah, Community.
So C, on CDS, they're talking about, uh, doing interviews with six to eight, uh, real estate experts in the central Texas area. Are those six to eight interviews not only their views and opinions on what we need, but also potential recruiting of those developers to go into that part of the private partnership?
Yes, yes, potentially.
I see that the, uh, just in the time I've had a chance to look at it, that the CBRE proposal seems to be much more in-depth than what
CDS.
CBS.
I agree.
CDS, yeah. You're getting more bang for your buck, even though your bucks are a little bit more, but.
Yeah.
Worth it to pay a little bit more.
Hey, Jonas, this is Brian. Um, isn't Trapper the same Joe that did BP again?
Yes.
He said he also.
Yes, so we, we went back to.
Very familiar.
Yeah, yeah, and so we, we asked him to pull his old materials and build upon that to give us a much more refined product, an up-to-date product.
So he's not starting from scratch.
Correct.
Like the other companies would.
Correct. Yeah, but that being said, if we, if we do have this meeting with this developer and then we could jointly, he, he surely has his own feasibility process, uh, that could incorporate some of this, or we could kind of see, see, come what may.
So it sounds like we're definitely more interested in CBRE than we are CDS. But should we wait until we have this meeting to table this until April? Have that meeting with this developer and then come back and review in April?
What kind of, excuse me, Jonas, Fred Jobs, uh, what kind of an impact will that have on the relationship with you? So, gentlemen, will it significantly affect on what direction we go?
I don't know the answer to that. Uh.
I agree with, uh, Jason. We're not sure how, what the impact will be. Let's wait till we have.
I'm about the guy that's coming in that, that we would partner with for the actual building of the building.
Sir, yes, sir. And then this, what we're talking about right now currently is a, uh, two different firms that basically are going to go ahead and do the analogy to determine more detail whether we want small, medium, or large in our area. So.
Yeah. They would give us a product that then we would sh- shop or sell to developers. But if we already have a developer coming that is interested.
Yeah.
He would provide us, hey, look, this is.
Yes.
I kind of see this, like, I'm sorry, dude.
Well, I, I mean, in my head, I don't see the two being competing. I see where they would be very much complementary. Now, I can see why jumping ahead and jumping out and saying we're going to do this for $20,000, and then we meet with a developer and he says, hey, I'm ready to go tomorrow. And I'm, I want to do an 80,000 square foot spec building with you. Um, do we need to do the feasibility study and spend $20,000 when we have somebody who's sitting there ready to partner with us? I don't know.
Yeah, maybe duplicative.
Question, I guess. Well, I don't know if it's going to be duplicative because you're going to get much more in-depth analysis from somebody that does this for a living versus a developer, I think. Um.
But if he's, if Rick's right, if he's ready to pull the trigger and he's got, he's got people trying to bid to come here and build, I think our analysis is done.
Well, I see it kind of as a two-step process. So the, the first step is a feasibility. What should we be building? The second step, let's build a building. All right, so CBRE is going to say, okay, this is what you should be building, and then we take that and go find a building. This guy coming in on Tuesday, and correct me if I'm wrong, but he's doing step one and step two, right? He's saying, okay, I think this is what you need to build, let's build it, and I'm ready to go, or whatever he ends up saying. My question would be then, though, if we decide to go with this, you know, this guy says, yeah, I'm ready to build an 80,000 square foot building, let's do it. Would that CPR feasibility study still be beneficial to us for any additional, you know, amenities that we add down the road? A second spec building, other pieces of land, anything like that?
It, 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 it wouldn't hurt.
No, that makes sense. I'm agreeing with that, but.
I think we need to, personally, I think we need to table this until we meet with this guy and then make a final decision in April. But he, but I'm just making the argument as a devil's advocate, even if we decide to go with a guy that's ready to build a building, I still think a very robust feasibility study that we can use for the next decade is not going to be a bad investment.
Of course, to add to that, on the opposite spectrum, a builder can say, this is a perfect land, 80,000 square foot building, yet we got a feasibility study that recommends in our market area the prospect to sell would be 120,000 square foot building. So that's the reason why I'm doing this.
Yeah, I got you.
How is he, yeah?
Well, I mean, with an eighty, eighty thousand's a number we just picked out of the air.
Of course, of course, I'm picking out of one 20,000 square foot, going from small to medium or medium to large, depending on what goes down. We have a partner, a prospect builder who could work with the public private, coming in a few, in a week or a week and a half, that can say, hey, just by looking at your property, this is the best bid for the bill. If, if we went with the analogy or the firms, and they say you can actually grow it either upward or whatnot, just bring it for home, are we going to go ahead and do that? Because the market required, you know, the market that we can bring the businesses over to. Maybe expansion? We can actually start with that and go from there. It's my, I'm trying to think of this side of the box.
I have a thought.
Sure.
You can approve the, uh, one of these people, if it's CBRE or whatever subject to do, after you hear from the guy. So in other words, you can, you, if it, if it looks like the guy's going to come in and he's going to, you know, you can still do kind of a dual track. In other words, you're not going to necessarily sign the contract with CBRE right now. But you can kind of get that position that if this guy doesn't, if he comes in Tuesday and he doesn't really bring the stuff you want, you can leave, then you can start the process away trying to get the contract going with CBRE. Any more time? That's just a thought.
Request for discussion directions. I'm in agreement with Barbara. CBRE is my recommendation for the firm.
Any other thoughts?
By delaying, we lose a bunch of, of CBRE could be doing.
Correct.
But I mean, that's. And who knows how long you're reporting, guys coming down in a week, it may take. Um, so, I mean, I don't, we can.
How about this?
I'll make a motion that we approve CBRE, uh, contingent upon receipt of information from the investor that's coming in. That suffice?
Okay.
I agree with that.
We have a motion by Rick. Do we have anybody that would second?
Yeah, I'll second that. And my, my personal opinion, uh, well, I've dealt with CRBE, did I say that, CBRE, with appraisals, and they, they are very, very comprehensive reports. So they, they really do go into the detail that I think that we're looking for. So I, I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Rick, a second by Elizabeth. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to section I, item I1, update on capital projects, Jonas Titus.
Good, so, um, the, the linear trail Narrows amenity, um, we have, we, we solicited bids for that project. We, we received two. It came in a little higher than what we were anticipating. However, the, the, the recent land sales will still cover both projects. So, um, it wouldn't, we, this project is still feasible without touching our, our principal. So, um, I would ask that we get a committee together, uh, authorize two individuals that we can look at these proposals and, uh, make, make some recommendations and garner some, garner some thoughts on it, so just to see the.
Any thoughts for discussion?
Do you have the budgets in here?
Uh, no, uh, we do not, because they're, they are. Uh, no, uh, we do not, because they're, they are a little liquid as, as, as far as what we, what we want.
That's fine, I was just making sure I wasn't missing anything on the package.
No.
Thank you.
Jonas, you, you have a timeline, what you, uh, would like to have a committee meetup? Is it a better?
Uh, this, you know, this is.
Because you have both proposals in?
Yeah, we have both proposals.
Does the proposal due date pass already? Go away.
No, no, we, the window's closed, we got the, we have two proposals.
I'd be willing to serve them. I'd be willing to serve on it.
All right. If we get more than, more than two, it's, it's, it's trouble.
Do you need another one?
I think, I, I, I think with the two volunteers, I think we, we will be good.
Okay.
But thank you.
Perfect.
All right, item J, items for future agendas. There's no executive session today, uh, so the time is now twelve thirty-two. We will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, bye, everyone.
Bye.